Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Russell County Board of Supervisors, March the twentieth, twenty twenty-three, at six P M in the Russell County Board of Supervisors Meeting Room. I'd like to first to start off with a call of order and roll call. Tim Blavellace.
Here.
Carl Ray.
Here.
David E.
Here.
Steve Brady.
Here.
Rebecca Dye.
Here.
And Oris Christian.
Present.
And Luanne Wallace.
Here.
Ma'am, you have a quarrel.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. At this time, I'm going to ask to everyone to please rise for the invocation and stand, remain standing for the pledge.
Father God, Lord, we love you, we thank you, and we praise you today, Father. Father, forgive us for where we fail you each and every day. Thank you for allowing us to be a part of our local government, Father, and help us be more like you in every single way, Father. In your name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask for an approval of the agenda. Before I do that, I'm going to do a little switcheroo, if you don't mind. So I'm going to ask that we do have citizen comments directly before the presentation for the budget. That way, if you have anything that you need to get off your heart and mind and scoot out of the room, that's fine. And then I'm going to leave the citizens' comments after the budget so that we might have, we might entertain some questions for that. So I'll entertain a motion for this agenda amended.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion? I need a second. Thank you all. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. So at this time, if you signed up to speak tonight and you want to speak before the budget is, some of the budget is talked about, I'll open up the floor for that. And Mr. Lester thinks he's going to go for about maybe an hour, an hour and fifteen minutes, maybe. I'm going to say that. Okay. Give me your name and address and we'll go from there.
Okay. Hi. My name is Sarah Lambert Osborne, and I live in Lebanon, Virginia. Can I close this? Let me just open it. So I came to you tonight, thank you for allowing me to have the opportunity to speak, and I'll try not to take up too much of your time. But I'm coming to you over the, I've been made aware that we do have funds from the opioid settlement. So I am coming to you regarding those and how I would like to see those spent. And so I am a visual person, so I'll hand these out to you, if that's okay. Okay, so I am so grateful that we do have received these funds and have future funding coming. To my understanding from what I have read through the material, is that these funds do have to be spent just specifically on the opioid crisis that we do have, which I feel like is a difficult task in a sense to accomplish because as you all know, we have a broad spectrum of substance abuse going on here. But I have had some thoughts on that. I feel like in order to, our main goal should be to reach out to our first responders. I would like to reach the first responders, our Russell County Public School Administration, all of the staff, all of our government employees, and then go to our churches, and then open this up to our citizens of Russell County. And first and foremost, with the opioid crisis, misuse and abuse of the opiate, I would like to get Narcan distribution to all of the entities that I just mentioned. I would like to use the funds to purchase those. And also, as we do that, include a Revive training, which tells you how to use that, who can use that, and any liabilities or side effects to that. Moving down, once we do that, I would like, again, for all the entities that I just mentioned and on your paper, I have bulleted the areas I would like to target, which would, we would like to offer CPR and first aid training also. So this way, with opioid misuse and overdoses, when they're overdosed, a lot of times they go into cardiac arrest. So if we have, are equipped with the training and safety of CPR, first aid, we can save a life, hopefully. And I know CPR and first aid is hard, and a couple of questions have been asked to me. Well, you're going to be in a state of panic whenever you, if you approach someone that is overdosed. Obviously, it is a state of panic. I would be in a state of panic. I think we all would. But if we plant that seed of memory to the CPR and first aid, whenever they call dispatch, dispatch is going to start walking them through, that memory is going to come back to them, and they're going to be able to do the compressions and go through CPR until paramedics arrive. So again, we have upped our chances in saving a life. Now, going on down, this involves a little bit more. So for all of our Russell County Sheriff's Office first responding vehicles, Lebanon Police Department patrol vehicles, Honeaker Police Department patrol vehicles, our Russell County Public Schools athletics program, Lebanon Volunteer Fire Department, Castlewood Fire and Rescue, Honeaker and Cleveland Volunteer Fire Department, along with Copper Creek. I would love to be able to see or look into putting an AED in each of those trucks and ambulances. Most of those already have those, but our patrol cars as well. Because again, you've got the cardiac arrest that is involved in an overdose crisis situation, and if they have that AED on hand with the paddles to resuscitate, we up our chances yet again in saving another life as that gets harder. And of course, with the AED distribution, you would have to do the training to those, and we have, I have people who can do that. If you'll flip your paper over, I would also like to purchase medical kits, which would also include respirators for the Russell County Sheriff's Office, Lebanon and Honeaker Police Departments. These medical kits are, they are first aid kit, but they are also, they're a little more in-depth with that. They have a few items in there that are opioid-based on top of the Narcan, so they would have to have training to go with it. I do have a professor and a paramedic from Southwest Virginia Community College who is willing to do the training for that. But the medical kits is, there are two medical kits, and if you're interested, we can, you know, go further. But one medical kit is a small one that goes on the officer's vest that they wear. That is to treat them. Because if they walk into a situation, whether that be overdose or whether that's misuse, you have them intoxicated on the opioids. Most opioid intoxicated people are very combative. They are very violent, argumentative, so that puts those officers at risk. They can be gunshot, stabbed, even just through the fight, you can break the skin with that. And those officers will have a way to protect themselves while they also have a medical kit, a little bit larger, in their patrol car to take care of the clients who are around. Going forward, I would also like to do a youth CPR and opioid education because as we all know, sadly, we hate to face it, but sadly, it is with our youth more and more, and it's within our schools. I'm sure you're all aware, we just had two students at Honeaker High School a couple of weeks ago, had to transport them out, and we really need to focus on the youth as they are our future. So if we could offer ages fourteen to eighteen years old, they can actually be certified in CPR, and then we would educate them on opioid education as well. Moving down the line, and as bad as I hate to say this too, but our seven-year-old, from seven-year-old to thirteen-year-old, they face it just as much as their fourteen to eighteen. They go home, their parents, their grandparents, whoever their caretakers are, they are addicted. And they're faced with it also. But for the seven to thirteen, you don't, I would prefer not to get too in-depth with them. I would prefer to do like a fun animated thirty-minute program, just to kind of educate them on what to do in a crisis situation if they were to find someone overdosed, what opioids are, how to avoid those, if they are offered, what they could look like. That's what I would like to do. And all of these, and I have listed on here in doing my research and talking to all of our entities who are countywide, everyone in support here is Russell County Sheriff's Office, Lebanon Police Department, Honeaker Police Department, Russell County Public Schools, Lebanon Volunteer Fire Department, Honeaker Volunteer Fire Department, Castlewood Fire and Rescue, Lebanon Life Saving Crew, Southwest Virginia Community College, and then I've also had the pleasure of speaking with Senator Todd Pillian, who said that he would help me in every way of the guidance through this, and he is the Chair of the Opioid Abatement Program through the State of Virginia. I know that's a lot to throw at you at once, but I've just been sitting thinking, how could we use these funds to benefit each and every one of us in our county? And I, this is what I came up with, and if you would consider that, I would greatly appreciate it. And if you have questions or decide that you are interested, I would be happy to come back with costs and how we could allocate the funds and do a full presentation for you.
So this is just in consideration of your idea for this board to be thinking about. And also, let me ask you this. So how do you see, not to take us, not to lead us down a rabbit hole, but I do that a lot. But anyway, how do you see the organization to put this out? Is this, is this through the county, and the county sets this up? Is this through, what program would, would we use this, just strictly through the county?
Right, right then, a couple of community services at a fairly sizable, our county is using, I mean, Lori has to teach it. They, they're teaching, like, even, you can call her tonight as far as she can teach class. Probably bring Narcan with. So, but I think, you know, Narcan would be a great thing for everybody to have. I've got one in my truck right now. Training takes about fifteen minutes.
Yeah, in doing the research of that, talking to the State of Virginia, who does offer the Revive training and the Narcan, it says that you are to have an hour-long training, and then you receive your Narcan at that time. So it would take an hour, but we're all busy. So if we did offer the CPR first aid, we could also include that Narcan training with that also. CPR first aid will take four hours.
The problem then, great, is they're, and on those emails today, they're going to be very restricted on what the religious industry, and they, basically that mediation, you're saying? So, which is kind of like the treatment or something. I think we could do some prevention. I think we could do that. I think Narcan is a natural, but I don't know if they would let you teach CPR in conjunction with this, using their money. I don't know. Who knows? It's a new program.
Exactly. Well, and to my understanding, because there's a link that you can go, it's public knowledge, so you can go and look that up. So just in my reading, I'm sure you have. And that's why I came to you for guidance. However, I think the way, if I'm not, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we would have to submit an application and show how the program would go, what we would like to do, and then they would either approve that or not, if, you know.
If we had to split for our money, we could use our money if we wanted to, as long as it's for opioid use. So we wouldn't have so much to submit an application for that. We can just put a program together, say, probably ask them to review it and say, is this going to be your guidelines?
Right.
They're very stringent guidelines. If we wanted to apply for some additional money, there's another pool of money out there, we would have put an application together and applied for that. There's just all sorts of ways you can do it.
Are you, are you with a particular organization?
No, I come to you.
Just as a citizen. Okay, all right. I love the education part of that too, because I know people are putting stuff in vapes.
They are.
And the vaping is becoming, that's what happened, you know, with those two children. And that, you know, I think we're going to have to break that cycle. We're going to have to educate deeply.
The children, you know, there are so many children out there, like even in social services, and, but you're going to have to tie it into opioid somewhere. And we know that probably ninety-five percent is opioid related, tied back in. If you wanted to go into the CPR or the medical training, there's grants out there that you could probably do some aside.
That, you know, emergency management, V D H does AED training, they have AED grants, so you might, we might be able to work, you know, two or three grants at the same time to get one training program. I agree, I agree with the equipment allocation too. I think that is a need to have it onsite and have it with you on a consistent, because I carry the Narcan with me in my vehicle too. I took the training under Lori. And, you know, they were real, they wanted us to keep it with us on a consistent basis in case we, when you might need it.
No, and, and again, I'm coming to you not affiliated with my career or my organization, but I'm faced with this a lot sadly. I'm the domestic violence advocate for Russell County, Three People Incorporated. So sadly, the domestic violence and addiction, a lot of, I mean, it's ninety-five percent. It's tied in hand in hand. And in, and it does not, as you all know, addiction does not just affect the addict, it affects the family, it affects the children, it affects everyone around that is involved in that. So that's where I think too, so that we can hopefully, with the goal of stopping the children, our youth that is involved in it, you know, if we can stop that going forward, you know, for them not to choose the same path because, I mean, they're taught what they're.
That's a cycle. Some of these children have never had to offer, and they probably have been out of county soon. They've never been to a movie, they've never done skating, done anything like that. Some of them probably never been to the parks.
No.
And, you know, they don't know any other way. Children are products of their environment.
They, they are, and I have had a few instances myself, which has broken my heart, that the children have gone home and called nine-one-one or panicked and not called nine-one-one and ran to a family member's or a neighbor's home because they can't get mom or dad awake, and they're overdosed. So, you know, we may not be able to break the cycle. We're not going to be able to break the cycle. We're not going to stop. Right. We can help them feel safer in their environment to say, if I see mom or dad like this, I know what to do. So if we educate them and make them feel safer in their home in our county, because, I mean, the reality of it is, we're not stopping addiction. I wish we could, but we're not. It's been here since before I was born, and it's going to continue. We can offer every resource under the sun to an addict and pray that they take it, but until they want it, it's no different than us overeating. I love food, okay? I'm dying right now trying not to eat my dad's brownies. I mean, well, he doesn't. No, they are at his house. But anyway, it, it's the same thing, like it's whatever your addiction is, and until you want that, until you want to give it up, you're not going to do it with every resource available. But I like having the resources available so that when we do have them want it, we've got it. And again, to educate the children so that as they are growing, they know there are resources available, and they are again safer in their environment. So if they are faced with that, and they're friends. One other thing, and I'm sorry I'm keeping you, but when I went to school and I played sports and stuff like Castlewood, I played here at Lebanon, so like my friends, we were all Lebanon, Lebanon ball. We clung together. Castlewood was Castlewood, Honeaker was Honeaker. It's not that way these days. They have travel ball. They're all mingling within the different counties from out of state. They have cars. My mom just let me go to Lebanon and back over Cleveland Mountain. Now they're driving, my nephews and sister are driving to Johnson City. They're bringing this stuff in. It's, they have, everything is just open to them. So I really think if we can educate our adults and, you know, elderly, have, have them educated and prepared so if their children come in and bring it home. But like you said, just focus on the education too and preparing the children that they're faced with and as they, as they go on. However, we tweak this program, these are just some ideas. I am, you do not have to agree. I'm open to constructive criticism, but I would love to work together to somehow form a program that benefits each and all of us within our county so that we all feel safe.
And also Neighborhood Watch, I've been working on a Neighborhood Watch program in my district, and I've had people that I'm working with that are eyes on. Because even in our town of Honeaker, which is not advertised, but they've made a couple of huge busts, those people came from, even from Kentucky and different places, bringing all these, all these drugs. And, I mean, they haven't advertised it or put it out there, but I'm so proud of them, what they did to be able to get that off the streets. And, you know, a lot of that comes from a good Neighborhood Watch program that people can see, well, somebody's coming in, I've not seen it before. You know, you need to be a little bit vigilant about who's coming in, who's trying to get in the hands of our children. I mean, these were big stashes of some bad drugs.
Yes. And it's not just, you know, I wasn't, dad and I were talking, I said, I must have lived a sheltered life because like in school, I knew some of the kids, like they drank alcohol and stuff, but, but you, you were, I was raised to stay away from that. But you, you were, I was raised to stay away from that, and I thought that all that was there, which was like alcohol, maybe some marijuana. Well, now, uh, I was told by an officer, uh, a couple of weeks ago, like these vapes that are again being laced. Through manufacturers with the fentanyl and stuff, they're, they're selling them in school for two dollars a puff. Um, right, our schools, yes, like right here, um. All of our schools within our county, they're selling those, um, and they're, they're purchasing, bringing them in, that is laced with fentanyl. Um, heroin, I mean, huge stuff that, you know, you just think is off from here, it's here. Um, and I think it is a blessing that we have these funds to be able to fit them to use and to utilize that within our county and. And it's not gonna be perfect, but I think if we work together and tweak something, then we can create a safer environment for our county.
So you're very passionate about this.
I am, I have children. Well, you're welcome, and I appreciate you all, I know you have a hard job, um, you know, you get critiqued a lot. Um, but I do appreciate each and every one of you, um, and, and we all may not agree, and that's okay. Um.
It's kinda like learning process for us.
For everyone.
First year this money's been available, so, and honestly, I've been dealt with other funding agencies, honestly, they don't really know what they want.
No.
The, the people who had to give them, the settlements dictated a lot of rules, they wanted, you know, basically remediation. But I think we can squeak around and get some other things then.
Uh, and I've worked with grants and stuff before, and I would like to say too, um, and this is a part of my passion too. Obviously, I, I was raised, born and raised here and grew up, and I take great pride in our county, in our towns, um. I would love, and I know this is new, but there's so much red tape with this. Um, and I would love to be able for all of us to work together, do that correctly, and then Russell County be showcased. Or this is how they spent their funds and this is what they did for their community.
Part of this communication.
And, and I'll say this, uh, one other thing, and this was one of my con, my greatest concerns, um, so. With Narcan, there is no liability for us either, because I was thinking, okay, I have two kids, they are mischievous at times. I have a fourteen-year-old son, ten-year-old daughter, um, so I thought, okay, if I have this on hand. What could happen if they were to accident or purposely give it to each other, well, there are no side effects. Um, if you are not, don't already have the opiates and you receive that, there are no side effects, it cannot kill you. Um, so it is so safe to even have on hand anywhere in the home, in your vehicles. And that makes me feel better too, to be able to branch out into the communities, um. But if you, do you have any other questions? If not, I'm going for dad's brownies, so. And if you, you're welcome, um, on the top of the paper that I gave each of you is my contact information, um. So if you would like to get together, I would be happy to, if you need a full presentation, um, just let me know.
Keep working on that, and, um, I think your heart is in the right place, and I'm just real proud of you for coming up and stepping forward, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Now we're continuing on to the real good stuff, right, Lonza?
Yes ma'am. The real good stuff.
While you're sitting up, as we work through this, um, I'm encouraging everybody to keep this, these documents and. And continue to bring them back and forth to us so that we don't have to create more of these. So that's your homework for the next three months.
Good afternoon, board. It's at, it's at time again with the time of the year. Of course, we're entering the budget workshops and the state budgets at this time. Um, as we go through this, this is the first time, I, I think, well, it is the first time that we've had the full board in workshops. Continuously through the whole process. So, I tried to think of ways to be able to present to you, because there's so many information and so many departments that's coming in, so. What I was going to do, first of all, is go through what we're going to go through the revenue and expenses. And we'll look at the best thing, this is the first meeting of the workshop and the board as a whole. And this won't be the last, so this will be more of an orientation, this will be a. Uh, introduction into the budget processes and the, and the decisions that we've made. Of course, the second reason is, we're going to have more budget meetings, is due to the state has only passed what we call a skinny budget version. So, we do have some of the numbers better than last year, because it was a really, uh, budget, uh. Holdup last year due to the state and the numbers, we had to wait late into the year, so some of these numbers have came through, so we can establish some of these. At least to where we can start the process and get ahead of the game. And not to hold it up with, what I'm going to start off with is just, of course, the, uh. As any budget does, we're gonna start off with taxes and revenue, that's, that's where we begin. And way I have broke this down is, of course, I wanted to show the board. What it, what we have in revenues to operate the county, uh, departments. We have fifty-five different departments and programs within the county. Whether that's county operated, state operated, or grant operated, there's fifty-five, and you'll get to see some of those tonight. As you can see, first on the revenue on the general property taxes, and these have been confirmed off assessments. As you can see, our assessment has went down approximately a hundred thousand. Of course, our mineral tax has went down, up, you know, seven percent. As you look through this, you'll see our personal property, that is the public service taxes, that has went down almost approximately seven percent. For a total of sixteen million four seventy-four, as that is our general property taxes, that's the real estate, mineral, personal property. Global home, machine and tools, and of course, two key components in there is penalty and interest. That's the principal and the interest that we make off of these taxes, for a total of six point four seven four. That went down a total of eight tenths of one percent. Now, as we go through the other local taxes, that's it, so we go through the sales tax, the colon severance, meal tax. And the guaranteed tax, the cigarette tax, these set of taxes, what we call other local taxes. It is equivalent to three point nine million dollars. As we keep going down, as you can see, as we keep going down the pages of these line items, they keep getting smaller and smaller. My point will be, and you will see in a few, in a second, as we move through the next component, which will be the permits. And regulatory and the license, this is only fifty-eight thousand dollars. Now, the next component of the revenue line items is the use of, uh, funds and property. This is a hundred and ten thousand dollars, this is equivalent to what was last year. Next in the kind of line is, is services. Now, this is services that we pick up for jail and inmate fees. Admission, blood tests, et cetera, construction. Now, in this component, as you can see, I have highlighted, is only a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. The reason being, as I go through these, the ones I have highlighted in blue is only funds that the board has authority. To play with, to move, to utilize, these other ones are, are dedicated either to a grant, to a program, or to a service. So if we collect that fee, that has to pay for that service. So we have a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars that will go back to cover our disposal fee operations, based off the total cost that we run for that year. Now, as you can see, as we move through these, on this page here, this is twenty million dollars. Twenty million, seven hundred forty-one and eight fifty, that is the total taxes off of this, on this one page. Between the general revenues and the licensing fees. Now, as we move through the budget. Our miscellaneous revenue, it gets shorter, you'll see this list get very short. As you can see, the library fines, library donations, that we cannot touch, that is dedicated. Of course, to the library and what they use for operations, as you'll see, also within the miscellaneous revenue line items. Is the sheriff's department revenue, school resource offices and C TAC, these are operations that are dedicated to these programs. They cannot be utilized for anything other than these programs. Now, we do have two components in there, which is, of course, tax collection fees, which is Alicia's job, she, she, we do that. And the conference center, which, you know, we, we, that also offsets our costs in the conference center, to keep the rates low. As we do when people do birthdays or weddings. Now, out of that total page of recovered cost, of all of these line items, as we keep going through. Let's go down to recovered cost. Now, these, this line item component is recovered cost that we collect back through one, the S S is sitting here. Because we run through their, their payroll, their pension, their, and their V R S and the rest. These are costs that we collect back for vi- various operations, whether it's D S S, the I D A, the health department. The P S A for fuel reimbursement, these are recovered costs as it says. So, these things are dedicated to those programs, those operations, you, you, we can't utilize those in our operations. Those go specifically for those operations. Next, on the, the revenue, and I know I'm going through this fast, so y'all have to slow me down, because we're going through approximately thirty million dollars really quick. We get to the revenue from the Commonwealth. Now, of this one, of the two point nine million dollars that we have, as you can see, I have it all sectioned off that you can utilize. As we go through, this is D M V selects, D M V stops, the rolling stock tax, communication taxes, passport fees. And you will see one new line item in there this year. This is the Regional Improvement Commission, which is the casino. You have not seen this in there before, but as you can see, we have added those estimates in based off of what we set. And the casino is collecting and dividing between the thirteen counties, this is what we're estimating to be able to utilize. That comes out to two point nine million dollars. From the, the Commonwealth of Virginia that we're able to utilize, but what you gotta remember is, these revenues. From the Commonwealth are almost like a fee. Of course, these stops depends on how many B M, D M V stops we do, it's not a set amount, so what. What we get after global home titling taxes and A T V, it is a fee. It's a fee that's come through the Commonwealth for our operations, same way as the casino. It's all based off of it. The next category, of course, is one of the ones that always gets confused. They say, okay, we have shared expenses, we have the Commonwealth's Attorney's Department, we have the Sheriff's Department Commissioner of Re. Circuit Clerk, that is the Constitution offices. Those funds come directly insured by the state, they are not at the Tommy of the Board of Supervisors to be able to do. Anything or move that money, those are dedicated for those services based off our demographics and population. Those each department is up to and accountable only to the Constitution officers. And the state did that, so, and I don't get into politics, but under the Code of Virginia. That way, if you had one board versus another party, versus another party, you couldn't come in and cut the opposite party's resources. So, these services that come through, these funds go directly to each one of these Constitution officers. And you're required by law to give it to them for those operations based off our population and demographics. What that equals to is three point two million dollars that you don't get to utilize. And the next category is, of course, grants. That's self-explanatory. Grant, library aid grants, A N, uh, D M V transfer grants, fire program grants. Again, it's specific per program, these can only be utilized, it cannot be used as a general revenue. These are for the programs and the grants. Now, hey, we're already at the end of our tax base, this is how fast we went through this. So what we do, all that you've seen in blue, is twenty-three million, seven twenty-seven, five oh three. That's all you have to operate from the real estate, all the way through the fees that you have authority over. It's twenty-three million, seven, these are real numbers. These are historical, these are based off the program through each and every program. Now, it doesn't mean that's all the county gets, that's all the, the board supervisors can utilize to run its county operations. Of, of course, you will see, if we run through special operations in revenue, you have co-severance taxes. That's dedicated roads, that's the only thing it can be used for by law. The debt, the. The D S S funds, it's dedicated, we, the C S A funds that are dedicated. Of course, the asset program. In that, that's thirty-six million dollars, and the kiss, of course, the last one of a mile. Which, as you can see, historically, is about sixty-nine thousand dollars a year, that's both, both canries operating. All throughout the year, that's a, that's combined. So, again, you have seven-three to work from, and that includes the new six hundred thousand from the casino. The cigarette tax, the meal tax, all the way back to your real estate, that's it. So, now, how does that play into our operations? Now, with twenty-five major. There they are. Now, this is what I guess. Now, this one is the one that, when you go through it, as you go through, Russell County Public Schools is nine point one million dollars. So, as we move through these, and I have to move up, not that I'm walking and talking, but I have to be able to see this thing. Here is the twenty-five major core budget operations. Public schools is now a million, regional jail contracts is two point three, almost four million dollars by itself. If I throw it, if on the landfill, in the transfer station that we got due by law, which is by contracts, is one point four five. If based off of court, Russell County Courts, Russell County Security, which we got due by the Virginia Supreme Court. It's three point three million dollars, now, that doesn't co- include all of the operations over there, because a lot of them is paid by the states and grants. That's just the county share, this is only county funds that are going to be utilized out of the twenty-seven million dollars. Now, Russell County Disposal Services, as you will see, I'll show you how that offsets here in a second. That's nine hundred sixty-five thousand, we got facility operations, which includes electricity, water and sewer, all, all the government buildings. Community centers, parks, everything, we run on nine hundred thirteen thousand dollars. The debt services, which we have taken down since y'all have been in the office, is only nine hundred eighty-one thousand dollars a year, what does that include? They include this big government facility, it also includes all your water projects that inherited way back when, it's almost like the Biden administration, you've inherited all this debt. You have inherited all these projects, all these sewer water projects over the years, and that's. and that's what the debt down, load is down to. As you go through, the next one, of course, is the Community Department of Social Services and CSA, which is eight hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, five hundred seventy-five. Next is the Russell County Sheriff's Department, six hundred fifty-two thousand dollars. Now, that sounds low. Again, you're back into the Constitution officers because you've got to remember the state pays for all those Constitution officers. This is only six hundred fifty-two thousand dollars, only pays for their cars, their gas, their oil, their electricity, their water, their sewer. That's what it takes to operate the whole county over the year for the sheriff's department. The rest is paid by the state of Virginia. Next, you got the nine one one services, you got fire and rescue, and I'll go into those a little bit here in a minute. Russell County Health Department, Cumberland Mountain Community Service Board, Southwest Community College, the race program we did, y'all implemented. The county financial services and audit, the electoral board, which is another mandatory, and the electoral register, the Russell County Emergency Management, the building services and assessor, the Appalachian Senior Citizens, the Carks Recreation Parks and Community Centers, the sewer project, Virginia Tech, that's the VPI that sells the cow for the counts, the, for the county, which is about approximately seven million dollars a year. They, y'all contribute a hundred thousand too. They sell over seven million annually in cattle. And, of course, the county's insurance program that covers our boiler insurance and our building insurance and et cetera. And then, your big number for contributions. I hate to say it. As you can see, our poor little contributions to what we give to these nonprofits is twenty-six thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. Out of twenty-three million, seven hundred. There's your twenty-five core. So, if I look back, basically, go back to from the public schools all the way through number ten, the nine one one services, I'm at twenty million immediately, twenty million, of the twenty-seven, immediately. So, then, some of the concerns that I hear too is, okay, in our major core budgets, what do we have as a breakdown of county employees? It's county-funded employees. Because they say, oh, you've got all these county employees, you've got all these people and doing this. Well, let me give you a complete this morning picture. We have forty-one fully funded county employees. That's it. Those forty-one, seven of them are at the landfill to do the landfill and run all the disposal trucks. I got administration, I got forward, register one, treasurer two, tax collector one, judge secretary one, community work coordinator one, animal control three, building inspector two, merchant management one, building maintenance three, housekeeping two, which takes care of the government center and the courthouse. That's it. I got two housekeepers. Tourism one, conference center one, library four. Kelly's here. And nine one one services, I got five. So between landfill and nine one one, actually, the majority of the employees. I, we have forty-one full-time county-funded employees. This was just ran this morning from the current payroll. So that's how many full-time employees that we have. How many part-time do we have? Well, let's give you a breakdown on that one too. Town administration, we got one. Building maintenance, I got one. Liter control, one. The court bailiffs, we have three. Dispatch, I've got two. Community work program that works with us, gives us all this labor, we've got two. Now, disposal sites and landfill operations, we have twenty. That sounds like a lot, but let me give you, some of these ones that work part-time only do ten hours. That's not the majority of the cost, and I'll show you that in a minute too. The library has seven, which some of them works very low hours, and they come in as Kelly needs them and utilize them. For a total of thirty-seven. So that's it. So, as we went through these twenty-five cores and looked at the full-time employees, which a county of our size that has almost twenty-six thousand, let's use twenty-six thousand as a population. I, we've searched, I have looked, I went to other counties. Anyone that has population this size has population, employees in the seventy to eighties. That's just, go back and Google if y'all want to and look, see what you want to. But that's what we have had between full-time and part-time employees based off what we've got. What y'all got to remember is, as, as y'all have developed these over the years, our employees have worked, you know, to, to provide these services with less people. And, so, and to continue on from the part-time, and one of the ones I want to do is, next is, of course, here is the real estate and the mineral tax and the personal property. Of course, the personal property, that was an issue last year. So let's go through it. First, on the personal property taxes, we've got the new NAD books. Last year, we had, uh, to date, we have collected four million, seven hundred twenty-three dollars in, two hundred thirty, four million, seven hundred twenty-three thousand, two hundred thirty-five dollars to date. We had to, do what? Okay. Okay, I don't know how much it was, so it's going to rant. But anyhow, as Alicia knows, we had to, once it paid early, we had to reimburse it three hundred sixty thousand, six hundred twenty-four dollars, which gave us a total net of four million, three hundred sixty-two dollars in, and three sixty-two, six eleven. Now, we had budgeted, which is those two numbers that to the left, if you add up to three million, seven eighty-one and two fifty, then that is four million and thirty-one thousand dollars. Now, we were using delinquency. Remember, that was part of the conversations that we were trying to do. What is our delinquency rate? How are we going to hit that number? So, between them both, we ended up collecting three hundred thirty-one thousand, six hundred eleven from these topics. Not from residential cars, let me assure you. It was from businesses. All the RVs, the twenty-one and twenty-two cars that maintained and kept their property. You've got to remember, those are the business classes. You've got tractor trailers, you've got big trucks out. You've got Kaiser Trucking here has got major, major, you know, equipment that year. We only made three hundred thirty-one thousand out of all of these equipment from all these businesses that sit here. That's it. Yeah, none, that's it. So, when we projected the personal property rebate, we projected out a million and two. As you can see right here in the lower column, it says tax rebate that was projected, and that was the resolution that y'all passed. A million and two hundred, million, two hundred, a million and two thousand. We ended up giving back in personal property, one million, forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars, which is forty-five thousand, seven ninety-four more than we had appropriated. Where does that come from? Well, we had, that kind of comes from the abatements and I guess, you know, out of some of the business tax, the real estate tax, we had to move it out of the business. So, we had to supplement the tax break. So, again, that's how close we got this thing out of twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three cars. We hit it within a forty-five thousand dollar mark. That's pretty good. I think we did good. I'm, I drove the treasurer crazy during that time, so I ain't going to let her comment tonight. But, but we gave back to Russell County residents, everything that they were due, retroback to calendar year twenty-twenty-one, dollar for dollar, car for car, rebate for rebate. So, it worked out really well. Now, moving on to my next one is, of course, the casino funds. Now, the casino funds is not in this one because it's in the current year budget, but one of the things that I wanted to propose, remember, this is only county administrator suggestions only. Y'all have six hundred thousand dollars. So, under the terms and conditions, this is money that has these terms and conditions to it. So we can use it for three things. One, education. Second is public safety. The third is transportation. No disrespect to VDOT, and I hope they're listening. They can't have none of the money. I would not suggest you giving it to VDOTs because they already get a portion, as you can see, of co-severance. And they have other programs and they have their own state money. So, if we look at education and public safety, the way I have broke it down to is this. And, on the proposal is paying for the race program and the college program, which is two hundred thirty-three thousand and two hundred and one dollars. If y'all, y'all, when y'all go through your budgets over the weekend, you'll have, look at this, and you'll be able to look. And let me go down to, you, just place eyes. So, let me go down to general register. So what I did, I took six hundred thousand, and I said, okay, how can we utilize it within each one of the programs? Again, this is county administrator suggestions only. How can we use it? As you can see, right there is the college. And that's two, two hundred, that is page forty-one, sir. Forty-one. Let me go to read mode so y'all can see. Right there it is. Now, I've, I've got it towards where we can see it now. So it's two hundred thirty-three thousand, two hundred, two hundred and one dollars for SVCC, which is required by law to pay that based off of our demographics, the number of students that go to school and graduate from our high school and the race program together. That, that's the total comprehensive, two thirty-three, two oh one. Now, how did we, again, so it's education and public safety. So, the way I said, okay, the, of course, the fire came in and asked y'all for additional funding. So, as, so what I did was, as we went through this, hang on just a second, let me get back down through here. Get to my pages. Okay. Sorry about that. Okay. As you can see on the screen, last year, we, we gave to the fire departments twenty-six thousand, uh, page, okay, you want to say? Twenty. Page twenty-four. I'll do that for now. Twenty-four. Page twenty-four, sixty-one. Yes, sir. Yeah, because her and I have had quite a few conversations about this one. Okay. Of course, you've got all the fire departments that come and spoke, and they, they were right. They, they haven't been given raises in many years. We knew that. And y'all helped a lot with, with COVID money. You helped a lot with ARPA funds, uh, with the radios, the digital radios that y'all gave and the annual lobbyists. And when you're giving an extra thousand right now to even cover their fuel cost, a total of what the net we've got has been over one point six million dollars that y'all have gave to them over the last thirty months. So, one point six million. Yes. So that includes the radios. Radios by themselves were six hundred thousand dollars to get them up to the digital component, and that was the give of them. So, I, so, so, now, between Lebanon, Cleveland, Dan, Honaker, St. Paul, Belfast, and Copper Creek, Moccasen, as you can see from the twenty-six six, how could we do this fire league between all three components or two components, the public safety and education? So, here's, we raised, again, fifty percent. Now, the reason that we did this, because this year, our six hundred thousand, we don't have a definite number on it. This is a very big estimate that we have. We're going with the most realistic estimate that we can have from the casino board of what we got to be able to share. Now, if this adjusts next year, becomes more profitable, then we'll be able to adjust it next year. But right now, based off of equal share, and this is also did we do, and I put this in there and it's a discretion of the board supervisors, we raised the fire departments fifty percent, and we also raised the rescue fifty percent. To be fair, between all thirteen departments, they all went up approximately fifty percentage, as you can see. And that is on the next page too, as the rescue. You'll see the, that it went from thirty-one thousand, three seventy-five to forty-seven oh sixty-three. And they have the same problems and issues, whether you're talking to emergency services, both of them has that big insurance payment annually. That's, that's the big hurdles that they have. They already have problems with getting personnel and qualified people, but the insurance is always a big problem on both sides, whether it's the fire or whether it's the rescue. Because of whatever that they have to do, they have to do bingo or donations or being able to, you know, take up, uh, you know, charitable contributions and be able to get it. That, that insurance is always what I hear the biggest thing, hurdle that they have to be able to operate. So this will throw you up some of their money to be able to subsidize the insurance, but also be able to operate efficiently within the county. Now, the net, yes, ma'am.
So, we're working with six hundred thousand dollars to ever take a casino money.
Yes, ma'am.
And your proposal is four hundred and some odd cents and change or whatever, and then another two hundred here for the rescue. We've already eaten our six hundred thousand dollars.
No, no. The increase. My increase on the fire and rescue is one hundred fifty-six thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars. One hundred fifty-six thousand, eight seventy-five. Oh, they need to speak into the mic. Okay.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, the question that I had was, I, by the looks, what I'm looking at, it looked like we had already spent our, because every bit of our casino money plus some. Okay, so, again, it is a difference of a hundred and fifty-six.
Thousand, eight seventy-five. As, as you can see, when we went through the numbers and, you know, we sat down with these, and the fire departments currently get twenty-six six. They also, you know, get grants from the annual fire program, but to what the county dedicates is twenty-six six, we've moved those to an even forty at fifty percent to, through all the fire departments. And then when we set out, it said, okay, if we're going to be fired to the fire, we're going to be fired to the rescue. So, let's move fifty percent up to them. So that's, we've worked, we backed ourselves into these numbers, well, what, hitting that fifty percent. I thought, wow, fifty percent increase in one year, that's a big accomplishment without raising taxes in twenty-three years and hitting all these benchmarks. And, and I know they deserve it, and they, and it's not right for them to have to worry about the fuel in the car or what they need to be able to operate, whether it's a rescue unit or a fire unit. So, we've asked where, this is, again, y'all wanted it done. I came in at the numbers I could come in, by the program, to be able in the first year to come under the numbers, because the numbers that we got right now is six hundred thousand. To be able to use it legally, between what we can for education, public safety or transportation, I had to stay within those guidelines. So to get it share and equal, to be able to go between the next component that I have suggested, which is court operations. Now, of course, this is public safety. That, we have increased up to take care of that, and that includes the, the community work program through this, and that's two hundred and nine thousand, nine twenty-four in court operations. So if you add up a hundred fifty-six thousand, eight seventy-five for the fire and rescue, two thirty-three, two oh one for Southwest and the race program, and two oh nine, nine twenty-four for the court operations, which is what we have to do, it is a total of six hundred thousand dollars. That's how fast we went through this. So, it sounds like a lot of number, but it, it went really quick. But each one of these programs is worth that funding. The roast, the, you know, you got the race program, you've got the fire, the rescue, you've got the court operations, and that's what the funding was intended for and what to score. Two oh nine, nine twenty-four. That, that, that's moved in, into the, the circuit courts, the district courts. It's split up between all three courts. Yes. Two oh nine, nine twenty-four. Yeah, and community workforce, we had to increase every, you know, all those operations as a whole. So. And that sounds like a lot, but it, two hundred thousand just was a breeze to go through three ports. So. So that's a total of six hundred thousand. Now, like I said, this is county administrator, what y'all wanted. So I was trying to get it equal in fire. That was my only objective. So if y'all have a different idea, that's at y'all discretion. So of course, so we've discussed the casino funds. We have discussed the personal property, which we're getting current comps on right now. We're looking at what the January comps on the personal property is and to be able to get them from the N E A D A. As everyone knows, I've got some, a lot of cars that went down, some of the trucks and the SUVs have maintained their value. And we're trying to get a fire percentile of what this will do to impact within forty-five thousand. So let's try this again and get, get this correct. So that we're not pulling out from the business and being able to do that. We should have that soon. Now, the next one is the biggest consideration of all some of y'all, wherever you probably heard about it, is the waste management contract. That is the largest unknown that I have dealt with this year. So. And that's, that's going to be, as, as Tim and Carl know, they said on that board that it could come in at even dollar or two hundred fifty thousand higher. So that's, that's the range. I mean, that's about as close as we can get with a dart. Is that not right? Is that not the numbers y'all were hearing too? So that's the one of the things that we can hear. So what do, we do if it comes in at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars higher? Now, of course, we, we'll have to go back through these low hanging fruit again, as, as you know, and take a look at the numbers. I have built in at least a hundred thousand increase into the waste management of the two fifty. Now, how well we do on those negotiations between the transport and the landfill, the tipping fees, that's how well we'll come out. So right now, we've got about a hundred fifty thousand dollar variance that we may have to deal with when it comes available. And I'm not going to ask for the fee this year. I'm not going there. Again. Of, of the total, again, we have fifty-five departments that we fund, you know, how do we do this? You said, okay, we've got twenty-five court departments, we got fifty-five, how do we do this? Now, this is how. When this board, and I'm going to go back in history, and I usually don't do this, but when y'all took over in two thousand sixteen, this county was running a one point five million dollar deficit. You're going, how did we do that? How did this county run deficit? Well, let me give you the answer. Here's such a treasure. We ran off a three million dollar rand note. They were running on borrowed money. So you were running on three million. Over the years, and you had a B B rating, bond rating through S and P and Moody's, which you couldn't even borrow money on a water project, sewer project, or economic development project. You had to back off on the talent of Lebanon, period. When you came, you had a double B bond rating through S and P and Moody's. You could not afford a sewer, water project, or an economic development project. Right now, you have a double A bond rating. And they're backing on your bond rating, the county's. That's, that's the, we have no rand notes. We have gave out. On the bond rating, um, what does that apply to? So I, I did a little analogy, just on a quick loan that we were doing, even if it went through, only three million dollar loan between a B and B bond rating and an A and A bond rating is this. On a three million dollar loan, we can pull at two percent. That's six hundred and forty thousand dollars a year in interest. I mean, over, I mean, six hundred and forty thousand over a twenty-year interest. Now, if we go to a, a, a bond, an A, a, a plus, we can get it at five point five. Over twenty years, it's one point nine million in interest. Off of the, if you go higher than that, then a three million dollar at six point five, which is current market, watch the rates, two point three million dollars. So you're going from six forty to two point three, just off your bond rating. That means it's going to tie your hands on any water, sewer, or economic development project you got. You can't go borrow three million dollars. It's going, to borrow a three million dollar loan, you have to pay three million in interest over twenty years. That don't even make good business sense. You can't jeopardize that bond rate. Y'all fixed it. It's stable. We have, we lived within your means. As, as y'all have done since two thousand and fifteen, y'all have consolidated disposals departments, the landfill operations. You've restructured the contracts. You brought services in-house. You're utilizing the community work programs. And right now, you, you've consolidated the health insurance. It went from a one point five million dollar deficit to a six-plus million surplus. Also, over the eight years, you have gave twenty-three percent pay increases and two bonuses. If you approve this budget here, which has seven percent built in, since two thousand fifteen, you have gave a thirty percent increase in salary. Now, that sounds like a lot, and you're giving it to a lot of employees. But let's not be confused on this, and I don't want to inflate like we're, we're just really well-paid employees. When you all took over, right then, I've got fourteen employees that are full-time that make minimum wage of those forty-one. Fourteen of those forty-one are minimum wage. We're not running off a high. When you all first started, you know how much they were making? I got the payroll officer here, seven bucks an hour. That's what they were living on, full-time, seven bucks an hour. That's what their salary was. And in this amount of years, in the eight years that you're going on, they had, you give thirty percent pay raises if this is approved, along with two bonuses. And you still, I hate to say it, of the fourteen that is still at minimum wage to keep up with it, Kelly would tell you, she's got four right now, they're still at minimum wage. That's the twelve dollars an hour. That's, that's the way the numbers have worked out. The rate of inflation that y'all have inherited, the debt y'all inherited, is just outpacing y'all having raised taxes. So y'all have, only way you can never make these numbers work is to cut costs. This is, there is no way you can do this mathematics. You either cut costs, cut services, or operate efficiently. Now, how do they do that? And you go, okay, I've got twenty-five departments, but overall, I'm doing fifty-five. And if I go down through, as you'll look at the budget. Here's what the county did each and every year in budget. Now, this has already been audited. So. Right here. As you can see, in two thousand twenty, we came out with four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars under. We had a fourteen, four, four hundred and fifteen thousand dollar surplus. Twenty twenty-one, we had a million. And last year, we had eight hundred fifty-three. How did we do that? You, yes, some of it is on back. It is, your, your employees that are working for you, that you gave the thirty percent, don't spend their budgets. They work on a, on a shoestring. They underspend their budget. They don't, they're very, very conservative. So when you get that turn, they say that I hear all these comments out there on Facebook and, and YouTube, but you're, you're wasting your this and your fraud. Come on, stand before my officers. I'll let the feds stand right here before you. Come to my office. I'll have the feds and the state right here with you, talking to you. Let's hear your words, because I've got fourteen that make, the county does, that makes minimum wage. Where is the waste? You see the number of employees. These are the real numbers. Y'all have done an excellent job at this. You have done an excellent job. I don't know if I could run my house with the same numbers or not. Because we have cut costs, we have conservative costs. The people have worked, they don't spend. I, I got, I got a judge, and I'm not going to say which judge. He is the one, most conservative people I have. I, even, all of them are like this. They won't spend it. They said in conservative, we've got to be conservative, we can't spend that. We reuse paper. Listen to this, she knows I'm right here. We recycle paper. We run papers through the printers twice. And I'm going, where's the waste and abuse at? It's, that's not real. It's not factual. It's a lie. I'll prove it. Anybody comes to my office, I'll show you. Period. Period. So now. As. I hate to, I hate to say it, because our, our county employees are so dedicated and I, they work on the bare minimum. Of course, everything can be tweaked and, and, and made better. But overall, to get to those numbers, I'm not talking, you know, wasting pencils. You know, that's not the big money. You got to, to move these kind of operations, you can't worry about pencils and pens where it's wasting pieces of paper. These are real numbers to operate, to give the services back to the residents, to make it work what they are. Could they get better? Yes. And we are getting better at it. It's one step at a time. Y'all making the right moves. You have done the right moves. And you've kept at, again, and how do you know? You've got a double A bond rating. You know that when you walk before the banks. And I can tell you, who, who looks at your bond rating? Is McGuaran Woods, the top financial bond rating company in Virginia, period. They don't, if I set a, submit a set of financials to them on a water project, economic development project, you think they're going to just go, well, whatever Alonso puts in the budget, and that is it. They run those numbers. And it better be profitable, or you would not be able to fool the biggest bond rating agency in the state of Virginia.
I got one question, Lonzo. I know we've worked really hard on the debt service.
Yes, sir.
And how, what, what's left on this building? How, how many years are? It's about gone.
I, I got, I got two, two years and, and a quarter. That's it.
Because I know we discussed it a lot, knowing that the courthouse project was coming available.
Yes.
And the judge is willing to work with us, this full board, uh, to help us knock that service down, because the payments would. Would wash out.
The way we structured this with V R A and McGuaran Woods is when these, the courthouse is built and the renovations are done, the payment that's here, that's, that's here on the government facility will mature, it will be done, and you will start paying the payments on the courthouse. And we're not incurring more debt.
Yeah, right.
Lord, no, we, we've worked too hard.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to ask you that, because that was a great move or achievement that we worked toward.
Yes, we did. We did a deferral on that work for V R A, McGuaran Woods. We, again, y'all had a double A bond rating that, if you was a company coming in with a B, there was no way they was going to work with you on that kind of deferment and that kind of movement. There would be no way. Tough.
I know, because when we first got elected, I was like, we had those budget meetings, I was like, oh my God. What have we got ourselves into?
And, and if y'all want to talk about that, let's go with the courthouse. You started off with a sixteen million dollar project. You're three million dollars under project right now. That's how well this is going. It's under budget, under budget, and on time. And we got a few.
We used, we used somebody, some kind of money.
Yes. And that's one of the things we do. We, we got very innovative. And I didn't know it when we did it, because I was used to working projects to where we bought the materials through the state. And that's why I'm doing this one. And.
You've done a wonderful job.
So. On the tax savings alone is about a hundred fifty thousand savings. Just running under the bulk of the state contracts, we've saved over three hundred thousand. That's almost, that's over four hundred fifty to five hundred thousand dollars. And my ladies will tell you, I'm glad they're not here, that we, you know, they, we, Vicki would tell you, the volume is unbelievable. We got contractors and subcontractors that we have to watch. And we do it, you know, in alignment, but it's, it's going and, and it's working well.
It doesn't matter to us tonight, but how much did Abington's come in at Washington County's?
Thirty million. And let me tell you. And the funny thing is, they have called and they've said that. So they said, they called me and said, how is Russell County doing your courthouse so cheap? They have done that. They, they, Washington County, no, this is, this is actual, is piggy banking on our contracts. So what happened is, when we did the contract, we got before the inflation period, we locked it, we have not, uh, we, we have what we call a guaranteed minimum price contract. Doesn't matter what happens, that's the maximum price of that contract. They will fulfill it in every component of that contract for a guaranteed minimum price. We also included every day that they're late, a thousand dollars a day penalty for every day they're late, and that is not in place and not open, other than for weather days. Now, they get a, a day-for-day weather days, which is confirmed, which is done day by day. But, you know, Washington County started off at the same price as ours. It's now thirty million. Our materials costs did go up.
Yes, it did. And one of the things that we did to help it, amen, yes. One of the things that we did on the concrete and the steel, which we got under the inflation period, was we bought the steel, brought it in and staged it before the prices hit the market on increase. If we hadn't, we'd lost a half a million dollars.
Next thing I want to ask you. Sorry, are, are we all, oh, can we move off the courthouse just a minute? Um, going on to, uh, the core budget operations for, uh, number twenty-two, the Russell County PSA Danse Sewer, hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Are we ever going to get that paid for?
Uh, we're going to get all of this paid for.
Yeah, well, I mean, I understand that. But that, is that it? Is a hundred and thirty thousand the payoff?
That hundred and thirty thousand is, Steve, is when we run through what we get from revenue. We make revenue on the Danse.
Yes.
Yes.
By leachate?
Yes. We have approximately two hundred and twenty-three customers up there that we collect revenue off of. We, it pays for all the people down there, the operations, materials, and it's a net. So, uh, that one thirty that you see, let's go back to.
So when we get our, when, when we get our new sewer, um, that's going into the regional sewer in St. Paul, what happens? You don't, you're not going to need that, are you?
We're not going. Okay, hang on a second. Let me, let me get.
So that's going to go away? Sorry, you can save that till next month. That's homework.
Wait a minute. Let me get the computers right. There we go. Okay. Now, sorry about that. Okay, the Danse Sewer. Now, when the new sewer plant gets put in, new sewer system gets put in, which we had, PSA had a meeting today to move forward with this. So, uh, that cost will be taken off the books. That, that's, that, that sewer cost, that plant will be taken off? Yes. Yes, and that's a refinance financing. And what y'all got to remember, what we're doing meantime, that's another cost y'all have.
But we're still going to save, what, a hundred thousand a year on the leachate?
That's what I was getting ready to go to. Thank you. That's where I was getting ready to go to. We, at one time, until two years ago, we were running our, our leachate through the town Lebanon. Well, we paid a contract, and that was equivalent to two things. One, a hundred and twenty-five thousand just for the leachate treatment alone. Two, the trucking component was seventy-five to eighty thousand, which is a total of quarter of a million. That's part of that cost y'all cut. When I say the landfill, y'all cut a quarter of a million dollars just in the leachate treatment. We moved it to the Danse in the meantime, to the new sewer system gets put in, and we're operating it on ourselves and for fifty thousand dollars a year. That's how, we went from two fifty to fifty. So that's cutting more costs. That's how you're doing this, between the county employees, reduction of debt, cost savings, implementing all these in services. Again, let, let, to put it in perspective, we have four hundred and seventy-seven square miles, all these parks, all these buildings. We have three maintenance people. Three. Uh, you seen it, right there it is. Three, three, three. I mean, there, you're not going to operate on a more restraining case. If, if I've got waste, misabuse, mismanagement, please come to my office. I like to see you sat before me. Say that again. I didn't hear you, sir. Yeah, we have to prioritize. We, and, and I know y'all getting patient, we, and y'all, y'all want stuff done. Y'all have got project, we started scheduling, y'all had me scheduling project in December for March, and that's, they know. Y'all have got project. We started scheduling, y'all had me scheduling project in December for March and that's, they know that. Each one of y'all has your own little projects, but you got, you know, the guys know what, between what skilled workers we do have, you got to admit, it is the best work you've seen. I mean, they do good work. They do good work and I got to give them their due. I mean, I mean, we, their skill sets is unparalleled. I mean, you'll never find them. Mm-mm. And Tim can't hire them. I work, I work for the school. But the point is, and the, and the final thoughts is, y'all, y'all have done a good job. You've cut. I don't believe what, that nonsense that you hear out there. Let me show you the numbers. These are the real numbers. This is what VRA, the big agencies do. So. Please, yes, you show me. You, I'll be, if I have to. I, I, and I have a do, open door policy. Not that we won't get it right, but like I said, this is all we've got. This is all we operate with. If you can show me, show me. I mean, I've got fourteen now, forty-one. It's one minimum wage. What are you going to do? And I can tell you right now, let me, and before we go, in the final thoughts, we've hired, we hired one for nine one one. You know how important that is. On emergency dispatch to be able to get them, get them in and get them trained on emergency management to work with our fire and rescue departments. By the way, that does a great job. We hired one. They called us the day that we were getting ready to show up. They said, we're sorry, we're turning down your job. We went to Walmart. They're fifteen, fifteen, sixteen dollars an hour at Walmart and we, we can't even match it to, to do emergency management. I got, remember those numbers here, part-time. Nine one service has got five part-times right there. As you can see, works emergency man, uh, nine one one. And he decided to go to there. We, we had one to quit today with disposal. Went to another county, but labor is hard to get. And to get dedication, how do you do that? How do, why do they stay at that wage? And Kelly and the rest of the ones that have their department is y'all's benefits. If, if they, they're high tenured, that you've got benefits in VRS in those programs. If they didn't, they'd be gone. And no, it did not. The cost did not go up. We're, yeah, we're getting ready to have those budget meetings too. I mean, uh, health plan meetings. But again, y'all haven't raised taxes in twenty-three years. This was the, I said last year, this was. I'd give you a balanced budget. With a seven percent increase for, for employees. Now, how did you do that? Like I said, it, each department is working together to get this.
Well, I'll tell you, the good Lord's blessed this county.
You can bet.
The good Lord's blessed this county and we need his blessings continually.
Last year, when I said and had these numbers, I said, guys, this is the hardest one I've done in thirty years. Well, guess what? This one was the hardest I have had to do. And, and I had real estate going down and me and Alicia, we had some active conversations.
I've seen some posters of you upset, won and dead or alive. Missing persons.
We, and she says, you're pushing me. I said, I know I'm having to. What, I mean, going to do, but here's one of the things that y'all have done for eight years. You have lived within your means. Show me, come to me. Show me where you're going to get better at this. I will listen. Period. Period. The only thing that we did, uh, yeah, that, that's, that's, that's done by the, that's almost like the NDA. Well, let me give y'all a break that you know. Yeah. Here, let me give you one point of the final thought too. You mentioned assessment. It's on the, it's on the table next year, by the way, by law. We, we waited to the maximum under the code of Virginia to be able to do, I spoke to Randy just this morning about it. And, and Alicia knows that, that's one of the things that, that's, we got to get the assessment done and, and study done next year. Now, and the second thing is, and I'm going to have to speak, you know, for the treasurer. Now we need to set the tax rate. Now, we're going to meet for the board meeting in April. When do you need the tax tickets done?
It usually takes Randy about two weeks to get the tickets ran and then it takes them about two weeks to get our tickets printed. So due date is going to be May the twenty-third. Um, if we can have it, uh, far for second week of April.
Have it second first. That's how fast we got to set this. Yes. That's your next meeting. That's why I'll have to advertise this. Yes.
And we will, we'll know at the end of this month once the waste management.
Yes.
Cost comes in. So fingers crossed. Yeah, it's the thirty-first. We'll know.
Yes. That's the only variable that I do not have covered is that Waste Management Authority contract. It's the only thing I have not accounted for. I mean, we went through, we broke, I have a hundred thousand based into the landfill. And that's because, that's cause when, last year and how did we get that? We went up last year because during the pandemic, everybody brought their trash. We had more trash and they were buying everything. Our tonnage got more consolidated. So that went down. I really just had it in there. I just, I was saving it in the list tonnage. So I'm leaving the budget line on them alone.
We, we opened them the thirty-first of this month, but, but we don't have to, the contract doesn't expire until October. They had to negotiate. Hope, yeah.
I, I'm in those meetings. That's how bad it is.
He's been coming.
That's the, that's the variable I'm watching. And, and who knows what we have to do. It may not be what we like. We may have, and I'll let Tim and the rest of them, when this comes real, we may have to come together to find a solution for it. And it may be, you know, we'll have to deal with it, but the good thing about it is, like I said, is you got a double A bond rating. You can move when you need to move. You can move how you need to move without having to raise taxes, stay it is, get it and get it more. I would have loved to took, you know, some of the extra money that, of the waste management and done more services, but right now that's real. These boys know that this is a real movement. But as you work through these two large reports that I gave you, the one that's proposed, the one that is this year's, you'll see our numbers and why, how we estimated these. You'll see the real estate that went down, the components that went down, the ones that went up. And after much discussions with the treasurer and commissioner revenue, these are the numbers that we agree on. And like I said, we're pretty good at this.
Yes, sir. We still at the point where any increase in the real estate tax amounts to about a hundred thousand dollars.
It, it, it is about that. If, it's about a hundred thousand per one cent. Now that's at gross, not net. That's at gross. It's gross. Yep. And, and you got to remember the commissioner revenue, and I'll speak for him first, and I will. He's got a ninety-nine point four percent rate on the, on these estimates. Now I'm going to speak for the treasurer. She may throw something at me. She is collecting at the maximum rate. She's, is working the programs and it's getting back after these, these properties are getting back on the tax rolls. And she is moving them fastest as she can move them. And she's looking for other methods and I'm going to speak for her to, to be able to move them through faster. Am I right? Thank you.
Okay. One more thing to consider that I would like to see is, um, how can we update our GIS system? Is it in, incorporated in some of this budget work here?
The GIS system that we currently have, which is with interactive GIS, which is the same platform that Washington County has in the rest. And it's as any platform and the IT boys are here with me, we've discussed this GIS. It's whatever y'all want to bring that platform up to. Right now, uh, you know, we didn't need, you know, and we, but we do need now because we're getting more things on, you know, with projects and economic development and land and, and accuracy on these, through the assessor office, be able to get correct benchmarks off of this to be able to get it. It will take two things. I'll need the funding to be able to increase it, which is either, you know, county pays for it or by fees, which we had done before. But we may look at it from like other counties. They have, some have for components for like realtors, businesses and attorneys and professional engineers, one set. And then you have the basic for the, uh, you know, regular citizen that wants to go in and look at their property and say, hey, this is what I've got. And this is what my neighbor has and all of this. But when it steps up to the level of data and the requirements and the accuracy for the professionals, then you may look at it face. So I can, we can, we can approach that, take a look at. We, and we're getting ready to do the flown to photography with the new assessment.
I think the soft, oh, I'm sorry. I think the software is, is probably pretty good, but the management of it or it needs to be, I don't know what it needs to have. Cause I've had several calls and several complaints, uh, that the property is not where it says it is. And it is, it's totally incorrect. It's totally incorrect. And so we, we, I don't know what this is going to cost to fix this, but in, in, it may be a simple fix. I have no idea. I just, I just want to make sure that it gets fixed.
Well.
Because the professionals can't use it and the regular citizens can't use it.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. I want to see, and you know, on the shape files that we get, you know, we've got two systems that we run. Now the assessor's office runs pictometry, which is a higher level, which has the flown over, which has the topography with it and contours. Then you have access to that, but that, we only have one license, you know, for the pictometry. And that's for the assessor's office to be able to assist in the assessment of, of the properties. And then we have the regular GIS that we have through interactive GIS. Now I can work with, I can mention, we'll discuss with commissioner revenue, the assessor's office to be able to, and maybe look at with the IT department to see what we can maybe load up the plats into, and this is one of the discussions, to get a better definition to it, if that makes sense, rather than the program. We might be able to link the plats in with the property.
So is air nine one one services, are they linked into this? So they know where the fire hydrants are, the, and they know all this? So they have their own system?
We have our own system as number one. We don't allow the general public onto our.
Understand, but what I'm saying is air dinosaur of a system over here on one side is not affecting the other side, right?
No.
Just want everybody to know that. Thank you.
Those fire hydrants in the county that y'all pay through under, which is supposedly in this right now operational, those are benchmarked in ARC, which is the nine one one emergency services system. And we actually have access to thirteen counties when we bring up our, our, our emergency management. Many times. Well, as Katie would tell you, I think I, I walked, I don't know how many times I have worked Walt Feeny on the trash lot over there. So that was a, that was an experience in itself on them trying to find an oak tree, a poplar tree and a walnut tree. Yeah. And it's either the mines or the nature conservancy and you will see the names in there. You will see, okay, who owns this piece of property? Yes, I agree. And, and I'll talk to Randy and we'll, we'll see if we can't work on that. Any other questions?
Executive session to include, um, this adepticoordinator that, that Wesley Lawson. Don't seem like we're getting it for with him. And I'd like to ask to address that and say, we can't get that moving forward for adepticoordinator.
Okay.
And we, we approved two and we can't even seem to get one.
That's right. We did approve two. And it's hard. You can, it's hard to get somebody. It's hard. It's hard.
And I've talked to Jess and he, he can use one if, if we could ever get, you know, get material out and down the line to, to accomplish that.
It's hard. It's hard to get them in any positions. It is definitely hard. But one of the things and the best program that y'all have built and implemented is that community work program. Here is your savings, about one point three to one point five being a year. There's another cut. I didn't even say and mention it. No, I, I'm talking just cut straight labor cost. Easy. They, they're doing painting. I've got all over the county. You'll see. Feeny, yeah. I got Bob Gibson. He's, 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 he's right on it. He's actually down in Castlewood. They're redoing the, uh, the tennis courts down there. They're redoing the fence. It's all community work, right? Working with the school board. And, and it's, it's just.
Remember the lights at Honaker Little League Field.
Yeah, I, that's, my, my staff is on that. That will take my staff, the, the engineers. But Tim would tell you, I mean, they came and done all the work. So any final thoughts other than needing money?
It's a little easier than I thought it would be. So Monday, uh, so Monday, the, uh, third of April, we'll start at four o'clock.
Yeah. It is, but how you, I answer one more question for you. How did you get, you want to say, how did you get to seven percent? What you got to remember is the key notes that I pointed out to you before, from the state, all constitution officers are being covered by the state. The school board raise is covered by the state. You're taking care of the forty-one people. That's it. That's the raises. And you're able to give to the fire and rescue, the courts and the race program. Creative movement. And it is, I mean, it's, as real as real can get. That's a dollar for dollar movement. That's all I have. If you have no more questions.
So do we, I'll entertain a motion. Will you adjourn?
Make it.
Wait, do we have to re?
Oh, I did say that.
You had to see some comment and do we need reconvene since or on, since we're going to go into the next budget session? That's right. Sorry about that.
We're just going to let it ride till April. I will entertain, uh, anybody that needs to do some special comments. Any public comments? Anybody? You're going to save it? I appreciate everyone coming and, and sitting through these numbers. Thank you, Alicia. We appreciate you and this board for coming out here again tonight. Um, oh, anyway, I'll entertain a motion. We adjourn. I got one. I need a second. Got two or three. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll see you on April the sixth, four, third, third, four o'clock.